6 o'clock, we'll call the meeting. I hear the talk about the short-term rental. Shout out by reading the changes, going over the changes.
Is there a handout?
Right outside the door. It's the same one you had in your zoning meeting.
Changes would be to, changes in the zoning that are proposed to make short-term rentals a conditional use. Now, each SDR would be, have to go through a conditional use permit. That condition is put on it, then appropriate condition, which is one. Handouts here. Definition of short-term rental is the state's definition. Means a furnished house, condominium, or other dwelling, room, or self-contained dwelling unit rented to transient, traveling, or vacationing public for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days and for more than, not more, for more than 14 days per calendar year. Open it up to comments.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Has the board decided whether to require all the existing SDRs to get permits?
We wouldn't require that.
Well, there are two ways of dealing with it. You can classify them as an uncommitted prior use, which doesn't require that they have a permit, that they have, get a permit since they were established before the ordinance. Or you can require that every existing SDR gets a permit, a conditional use permit. There are two ways of doing that. So, that's the question. Has the board decided that all of the SDRs will require a permit, a conditional use permit?
Yes. They decided that.
That's basically the question.
Yes.
Yes, he answered yes.
He answered yes.
The board has decided that?
Yes.
120-day grace period.
Well, that'll be part of the question then.
Yeah, so there would be 120-day grace period for anyone considered pre-existing.
I understand.
But that everybody new and old would all be under that same umbrella, for fairness.
So, anything existing or new would require a conditional use permit?
Correct. But the existing ones would have a grace period.
Yes.
To get theirs done.
Oh, that's, that's.
Because that seems fair.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we.
You don't really have any way to regulate it and enforce it unless you take away the conditional use.
Well, enforcement is going to be a problem. Most of the time, when we have a conditional use permit process, people will adhere to what the process is. But there may be people who say, "I'm not getting a permit." Those are the, those are the ones that you have an enforcement problem.
Well, we have an enforcement problem right now because.
Well, yeah, we have.
Short-term rentals are not a conditional use.
Correct.
So, everybody with one now is breaking by the zone.
Well, not really because that is not now a requirement. What you're establishing is a future requirement after, after it's been adopted.
But we have conditional uses right now.
Yes.
Short-term rentals do not fall under.
Well, it's not allowed as a conditional use now. It is not now allowed conditional use. So, until something is passed that allows it to be a conditional use, they are in violation of the existing zoning regulations. Is there an opportunity to ask questions?
That would be now.
Okay, just from purpose of the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
I have a few questions. One, if you, do we have a count of how many unhoused and short-term rentals presently exist in the town? And if we do, how is that determined?
We do not because we don't have it under conditional use, so therefore, there's no way of knowing exactly how many there are.
Well, in Chester, they hired someone to compute that number. And until they actually developed their ordinances, if you, you can follow this along in the Chester Telegraph, they have a moratorium on new short-term rentals. I think that we have, not only do we not know how many we have, but we're going to have no limitation as to how many are added?
No, we're not.
No?
We are, we are actually bringing this to the town to vote upon. Do they want this as conditional use? We are bringing.
That's like asking, "Why I want a car, but I don't know what the price of it is, I don't know what the model of it is, and I don't know what the condition is." To vote whether we're going to have more or not without knowing what the conditions are, that's buying a pig in a poke.
I don't think that the vote has anything to do with whether there would be more or a moratorium on them. The vote would simply be that if people were going to have short-term rentals in Andover, they would have to be under conditional use.
Yeah.
Because it would give us away.
But when it comes to the vote, I might be willing to vote if I, if it was a limited number and I knew what the conditions were. But if I don't know what the conditions are, I can't vote.
The one condition would be what Robin said, which is, all short-term rentals would be under that conditional use. Anyone who was pre-existing would have to get right with that. They'd have 120 days to do that. We're thinking that one of the thoughts about this is at least in this way, we would be able to get more information about the people, the places, and who has them, right? This is a legal way for us to do it.
You can get that information without approving them. You can, you can get a survey, you can get a firm, you can, you can come up with an inventory without having to make them legal first. It's like having, if I have, it's like saying, "I need to make marijuana farms legal in order to know how many I have."
Well, we, we haven't, but to us, we have thought along the lines of, and I say "we," I'll say "I," that it is not my place to tell people whether they can or cannot make their home into a short-term rental. That is not my place to say that. My place is to understand whether they're out there for the public, but personally to tell someone what they can and cannot do with their property?
Do you see any balance between the interests of the owners of these properties versus the community at large?
That is a concern, but at this point, I, I personally don't feel like it's something I want to step out and say, "Okay, I'm going to say we can only do this many," or that I'm going to tell this person, "Okay, you, you can have one, but you can't." I'm not willing to do that right now.
The thing is, is, to your point, is that you have all of these pre-existing short-term rentals, which, you're right, we don't know exact numbers, although I'm sure we could find out. But here's the thing.
It's between 25 and 30.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Right.
Thank you for that. I knew you had that, but I didn't want to put you on the spot. I knew you knew, which is why my hand was pointing in your direction without saying your name.
Well, I didn't hear that.
It's between 25 and 30.
And how is that determined?
Basically, by looking at Airbnb.
Well, I found about 25 and 30 about two years ago.
Yeah, and some of them come and some of them go.
Right, a lot of property has sold. But the point is this, if there are 20, say there are 20 pre-existing short-term rentals right now, and then we say as a town, and I think a lot of towns, and we've looked into this a little bit, there are a lot of towns across Vermont that are getting into some deep legal water with some of these decisions. Andover does not have the kind of money or, we don't have the kind of money that would let us get into a long legal battle with someone who said, "Wait, there's 25 pre, there's all of these pre-existing short-term rentals. I just bought this house, and now you're telling me that it's disallowed by the select board of the town of Andover? That's not legal."
Only one reason to have a moratorium on new ones.
You can't have the moratorium, that's what I'm saying. That comes up as not legal. It really does, you can't.
Chester is acting illegally.
I'm not saying that Chester is acting illegally. I'm saying that in Andover, we're trying to be very cognizant of keeping ourselves out of that big pool of difficulty because we don't have the money.
I have another question. What duty, if any, do we have to the people who would come in, transient people who would come and rent these properties, that these properties are safe?
Well, that would fall under the state regs of a short-term rental.
We have no, we have no duty to.
We, it would fall under the state regs of what a short-term rental is required to do. There are state regulations.
We're about requiring them to carry adequate liability insurance.
That would probably come under state regs. I'd have to read about the liability insurance on that.
Joe, you might know the answer to that.
There are, there are any number of ways people have, and towns have approached that. Some towns have, by adopting ordinances, specified very specific conditions under which these things would operate.
Well, if a.
Joe wasn't done.
If.
Joe wasn't done speaking.
If a short-term.
Joe wasn't done. Joe wasn't done speaking.
No, I'd like to hear what you're going to say, though.
There are, as I said, many towns have different approaches. And by saying that they have an ordinance that specifically says a short-term rental will be doing this, there are very specific ways of towns doing very specific things and having very specific requirements. By adopting a, the conditional use approach, one thing that I haven't heard the board discuss is the difference between adopting an ordinance which gives a permit to the owner. When you have a conditional use permit issued, it goes with the land. It becomes a permanent attachment to the land. It does not at any time expire. So, that may be something you need to think about, but I'll make a decision about. But the only thing is, as I just said, when, when you do a very simple requirement that says you have to have a conditional use permit, the conditional use permit process is outlined in our zoning regulations. There are requirements, and the board can reasonably attach other requirements that are not specifically mentioned. But they have to be consistent, they have to be equal to all of the applicants.
Fair, right.
So, but that's, this is the.
I have a question. You haven't written any laws yet, Ben?
I've written the ordinance.
Yeah, there's work on this. So, I don't, the way this society is today, you could, you have to write it into law that, who the club is running this room, it's time, the people who stay there should be like a motel, to have their, record their number, their name and everything, vet them somehow with a license number to their vehicle, and keep a record of it, so, and they have to keep it, not us. So, if we have a problem, you could go to the people and get this information. We have a right to know who's coming and going in this town. And not that the town has to do it, the people who you give the permit to do this, have to do it, and you can come back and check it, spot it up. So, if something goes wrong in town, you can, the police, anybody can track that, who was there when.
So, that is, we aren't, we aren't writing any ordinances with this. We are asking, we are bringing this to the public to decide whether we should put, well, my opinion on that is that are we going to do the same thing with everyone who moves in? And are we also going to do the same thing with the campground?
Because this is leading to what's going to happen in the state. This guy got a motel. Now they got illegal people, by putting them in these places, and you have no control of it. So, if you, if you can't let people in here, you're going to protect the people in this town and not allow the state to come in and say, "You have to rent this room that there's illegal people."
What do you mean by illegal people?
Thousands of them coming across the border from Canada. There's people that are, who don't belong in this country, they're illegal.
So, you're requesting, you're, you're asking us to do what about that?
Make it illegal for the state to come in and make you say you own one, and say, "You're going to put these fine people in your house until we decide to put them someplace else." This is going, this is happening all over the country. Don't you understand? Don't you see what's happening all over the country?
Yes, but I don't think.
Running, running a little Vermont, they're stuffing them in motels all over the place.
I don't think that, at this moment, at this juncture, we're talking about short-term rentals as we are the town and how we're dealing with that. I think if someone owns a home, and they live in Connecticut, and they have a short-term rental here, if the government is, they would have to get a hold of them, not us.
What, they're going to come up and say, "You have to take these people in?"
I don't, I, I don't foresee that happening.
Yeah, right, come on.
What Hank is talking about is that there are impacts on the community associated with short-term rentals that have to be taken into account, that we are hosting people and that we may have people who are undesirable coming in, there's no control whatsoever.
What is your definition as undesirable?
My definition of undesirable is people who are disruptive to the community.
And what is that to you?
Disruptive to the community with noise, litter, excessive numbers.
Illegal aliens.
It could be, it could include people who are illegal for a number of reasons. I'm not just saying aliens, but that, the point is, is that, the point is, is that we have, if we are going to authorize, and these are not homes, if you have, I'm talking about unhoused, because if you're talking about the campground, the campground has, has management present.
It also has.
They, they, they see what's going on, they, they have some regulation if people are getting out of line. We're talking, I'm talking about where there's no one present. And, and these people come up, and a lot of them are nice people, but they're not familiar with the area. They're not familiar with the area, they're, they call 9/11, the police are there within five minutes, or an ambulance is there within five to 10 minutes. We don't have that here. We have, if we, if you call 9/11 here, we have no local police, we have a constable, maybe is involved with animal control, we have a rescue squad that may or may not show up in an hour. If someone comes up here from New York City or Boston and has a stroke, and they call 9/11, if they can even get through to 9/11, and no one shows up for an hour and a half, that's an unsafe condition.
Now, if, if that being said, the way you're presenting that, wouldn't that be the same case for everyone that lives in this town?
People who live in this town are familiar with that. I had a neighbor who was having a heart attack, and he had me driving to the hospital rather than call 9/11.
So, what, can I just add one question?
We, we live under those conditions. People who are from the outside who come here are not familiar with those conditions.
But what does that have to do with the, with the short-term rental?
Well, I'll tell you what it has to do with it. Are you familiar with what Londonderry has done with respect to an ordinance on short-term rentals?
I think we've discussed different towns, but I can't tell you to the letter.
Here is a copy of what they have recently adopted, and I think you should study it because it talks about the balance of the interest of property owners and the residents of the town, and it sets forth regulations and requirements that reflect that balance. Nothing is ever perfect, but I looked at that, and I think it's a pretty good ordinance. And I think before we even think about approving, changing the existing zoning, a precondition would be to have an ordinance that we know would be in effect.
I want to know what the tack, what the voting public wants to do about, not just you, but I want to know if the voting public would like to have short-term rentals on our list of.
And I think before the voting public knows whether or not they want short-term rentals, they need to have some more understanding of what the implications of it are.
I'm not.
What the balance is between the community and the property owners. And the third party of interest is the actual guests.
I understand all of that, and I agree with much of what you say, but our, my, my thoughts are that I would, I would like to see if the voting public, if our voting public wants to have short-term rentals defined as we have it here in our.
Conditional use.
Conditional use. And with, I, I am not willing to do an ordinance without going to that voting public also.
Well, that's, that's getting the cart well before the horse.
I disagree.
No one, no one, I cannot agree as, as a comparison. I cannot agree to buy a car until I know I see the car. I cannot agree to anything, anything.
So, then simply you would vote no.
Without signing a white check.
Then simply you would probably vote no. I mean, I'm not telling you how to vote, but wouldn't you just vote no on it? You have a vote, you have a say, so you would vote no.
This is also a public meeting in which we share information among each other.
Correct.
And opinions among each other. So, I'm letting my opinion known, it's not only from my vote, but possibly to influence others who may be interested.
And I appreciate that, I do appreciate that.
Sounds like Nancy Pelosi to sign the law again, you can read it later. That's what they ask you for.
No, well, I don't, I don't.
Think this problem, when they first came out with it, everybody was complaining about this, the, the only illegal way to stop, can't stop, this is a person's profit. But you can't put 20 people for a weekend in a place that's got two bedrooms.
I agree with that.
That has to be the first thing, that is control.
So, there are state regs, and I, I would encourage you to read the state regs as well before, before voting on whether or not you want.
Can you provide a citation to the regulations so I can look it up?
Could I provide a citation?
A citation, what the regulation number is.
We have provided that before short-term rental discussions. And I understand, I understand, I understand. I hear you.
You tell me there's regulations, why you need to know what the regulations are?
They're state regulations. Jonathan might be bringing you down.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
As a person that owns a property, it's going to have, produce work for people. Somebody's going to plow the driveway, somebody's going to mow the lawn, somebody's going to clean a house. It's going to produce work, work, something for people to do. A lot of people that live right down the street will do it because they don't have to travel, they'll go to work. But as long as the septic system's fine, I can't see any reason for somebody wanting to rent, as long as he's keeping it within the limit of the septic system.
Right.
You know, so, I think that's the only way you can illegally, illegally control, than start putting 20 people in a two-bedroom house.
Right. And I believe that is stated in, and I, I can't say this for sure, but I do believe that is stated in the state regs.
And once you get people in there, you have to be able to know who the people are. Just like a motel, you have to sign the, the hanging, right, your license number down and stuff like that. This is all stuff you have to.
But we as a town.
Before you ask the people if they want to do it.
But we as a town, I, I know that Airbnb does require credit cards, it requires who you are, it requires where you're, I mean, there, there is a lot of regulations that go into renting these.
It has to be enforced, it has to be enforced. There's a lot of bullshit goes on in this town, there's a lot, but it's not enforced. There's no way to enforce it.
That's, that's the biggest problem.
Because we don't have anybody to do it.
I think we had a question or comment in the back.
Who enforces the state regulations? Anyone from the state?
State themselves enforce it.
So, how do they do it?
Well, the fire marshal is the fire, which is your compliance with your Egress Windows, your Smoke Protector, your Hardwire, your Smoke Protector, paraplegics.
So, if we don't know who has a short-term rental?
If there were a licensing fee, then we'd provide a budget for enforcement.
And how do they enforce the regulations?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to hear you, but these, I'm sorry, Jean.
How, how would the fire marshal enforce the regulations if we don't know who has the short-term rental?
And that's, that's why we're thinking about doing, that's why we're asking the voters, do they want to have, this is the first step. Do you want to have short-term rental under conditional use? Because you have to take a first step, and this is the first step.
How will you present that? Will you educate everyone at the, obviously, not so many people have shown up here, so I don't know how much interest is.
This was supposed, this, this, right, and that is a, that's a point right there that you're making, how much interest is in it.
So, a question there is how, how will the voters that come to town meeting be educated on the pros and cons and what, what this actually means to all of us?
You know, we've put this all out there for everyone to be here to talk about, and you are the folks that showed up. Thank you for showing up, but you're the folks that showed up.
So, is this going to go towards the town meeting, this town meeting at the vote? Right?
Yes.
I think, and I'm, I'm going to speak for myself, but we, this group of people, Susan absent tonight, we have had this particular question since the very first day that all of us sat down at a table together. And every single person in Andover has had an opinion on it and wanted us to do a lot of different things. And as we talked with attorneys about this, which we have, and we've talked with towns' people over and over about this, it became very clear to us that we needed to find that middle road where it's fair for everyone. Like you said, fair for the people who live here all the time, and fair for the property owners who have a lot of rights as well. And so, for us, the reason that we are saying we want to bring this to the vote is because if the town votes to put short-term rentals under that conditional use piece in the zoning, as we said, at that point, then as a select board, we can start to do things with Joe in order to come up with a way to, yes, make sure that we know who the owners are, they've got these, they've got what they're doing. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do once it's somewhere in our zoning. This is what this is about.
Property owners only have rights to use and enjoyment of their property within the confines of the existing zoning.
Right.
They don't have unlimited opportunity to use their properties any way they wish if they are in violation of the zoning.
Which is, you're proving my point, which is why I'm saying we're trying to have the public vote and say, "Yes, let's put short-term rentals under that conditional use so that then we can craft it in a way that's going to give us as much control as we can have legally."
Well, I'm saying that anyone who has acquired a property or put their property to a use which is in violation of the present zoning, they double risk.
Renting your home is not in violation of this, of the present zoning.
Oh, I agree.
Renting your home is not in violation.
I agree.
So, there's nothing there that says whether, let me finish, please, because.
We disagree on that. It becomes, it becomes, I think our existing zoning does not permit unhoused short-term rentals.
I think you would like that to be the case, and I understand that, or maybe that's the way you see it, but there is nothing in our zoning that says people cannot rent their properties.
Well, the word is often said that the people cannot rent their properties, it's a.
In the timeframe in which people can rent their properties, there's nothing that says that you can't rent your property for a day, a week, a month, a year, five years, 10 years. So, what we're trying to do is come up with a process. So what we're trying to do is come up with a process in which we understand how these properties are being rented and the timeframes and what that looks like, because right now, there is nothing out there that tells us that we can't allow people to rent their properties or that we can allow them. And, and I personally, and I will say this, coming up for, to, whether or not you decide to vote me in or out, that I believe that it isn't our right to tell people what they can, how they can rent their properties, but we do need to have some sort of regulation on that so that we can protect the people around them if things aren't going the way it should. With that said, we could have a neighbor that moves in and rents their property or is a neighbor that just is an unruly neighbor and whether they are a short-term renter or a person who lives in their own home, we still, as a select board, can't tell them what they can and not can and cannot do unless it is an unregulated act that they're doing, that we aren't, I, I don't know, I, I can't tell my neighbor what they, that, that they can't have a barbecue, I can't tell my neighbor that they can't stay up after midnight, I can't tell my neighbor, you know, um, nor do I want to.
I can't tell my neighbor that he can't tune up his car in his driveway, but I can tell my neighbor that he cannot run for a business, a car repair in his driveway where he repairs cars for, for revenue for people who are bringing them there as a business.
Obviously, it's, it's...
It's a kind of a, a, a property that is occasionally used for yourself.
But actually, if he had an, if he had a conditional use permit to fix cars in his driveway for money, then yeah, he could.
Well, that's exactly the point is, is that he can only do it with conditional use permits.
Right, which gives us, which would give us the power.
To whether or not we are willing to approve conditional use permits without knowing what the conditions are.
I am not willing to put conditions in until I find out whether the voters want to have a short-term rentals put under conditional use. I'm just not willing, I'm not willing to step on everyone's toes and say, because I am a select board member, I am gonna put in all these ordinances without asking the public. That's not what I'm gonna do, because it's not, I don't think that's fair to everyone. I understand you all came and I appreciate you all being here and I, I hear everything you're saying, but I am, I personally am not willing to step out and write in ordinances without asking the entire community what they want to knew, to do. So the only way for me to find that out is to put in a short-term, in my opinion, is to put it under conditional use so then we can have more discussions about it.
That's what we're saying.
I want votes on this.
If the voters say, yes, let's put this under conditional use, that doesn't mean that suddenly we're gonna come up with all of what that means. It means then we can draft something under conditional use that we think will work for Andover and be fair to everyone and give people control about understanding who's in these rentals and who owns them and all of that. And then we put something forth in another meeting like this that says, this is what we're gonna do here. What do you guys think about this?
You can always draft an ordinance, you cannot adopt the ordinance.
We're not talking about an ordinance.
You can always draft the ordinance and have the voters vote on the ordinance.
We're not talking about what we're here for.
That is incorrect. The select board in Lunedary and the surrounding towns, they did not vote, their select boards adopted them and they went into effect and now the state has allowed select boards to change zoning regs without going to the townspeople and this board is doing what we feel is correct by putting this forth to the people of the town.
Rather than just doing it ourselves.
Everybody is very concerned about all these unsupervised, uncon, and all we're looking to do is have a definition to start and then any new one has to come forth and get a conditional use and within four months, 120 days, everyone that already exists, you have your chance to speak, every zoning board and planning commission, they're all public, they're warned, there's agendas.
You're gonna, you guys are gonna give us a lot of work.
And we gave that grace period for that majority reason for how many were already existing also, hopes that some would come forth right away and get it out of the way. We didn't want your docket to just be overflowing.
And with that said, everyone in this room needs to remember that we are bringing this to vote by the voters. We are not the ones saying we're going to put this ordinance in, or, I'm sorry, not ordinance, I'm sorry, that we are going to put this under conditional use. We are simply saying to, to, this is an informational meeting, but we are going to bring it to, to vote. Do the tax, or not taxpayers, do the voters want to put this under conditional use?
And then move forward from there.
That's what we're doing right now.
But what's gonna happen?
We just wanna put it on the ballot.
It's the people actually chose up this year, the town meeting, they're gonna ask you questions and you're gonna have to have...
And they can, they can.
Some kind of an answer.
And the answer is this.
There's some of the answers we're asking you right now.
No, because you're missing the point, Hank, and here's, here it is, if the voters say, yes, let's put it under conditional use, at that point, I would answer the question by saying, if the voters put it under conditional use, at that point, the select board is gonna put down, under conditional use, what we think that that's gonna look like and then we're gonna bring it right back to you people.
Right.
See, this is what it is, here, read it, this is what we'd like to do, do you all think this is a good idea? We're trying to make it so that everyone feels that they've had some kind of a say in this. We don't wanna just broad stroke this and just sort of say, we've got 20...
You can sell the people that you're actually gonna have some kind of control over it because there's a lot of crap that goes on that...
Not with this board.
The laws on the, on the, on the books are not enforced.
Not with this board, there's not a lot of crap going on here.
Well, you sent, you sent a policeman down the street.
We sent the policeman down the street.
We don't have a policeman anymore.
Did you see, did you see the increase in price? Did you come to the meeting, read the budget on the increase in price and the lack in, the definition of how much patrol we'd actually get for the dollar that we were spending?
Well, a little is better than nothing.
Not at that price.
It was a little bit too much in this board's mind for the taxpayers to have that burden.
Yeah, but then you get the guy going down the road 60 miles an hour.
Well, when they're four hours included in 45-minute trip each way.
It's the same thing, doesn't make any difference. You let this go, you, we gotta, we gotta control this one, but this is, this one's okay. Look at like my house, got a bunch of junk beside it, I had to play two or three times in it over the years and it's, you remember, we, we have no control over it. All I can do is devalue what property my value is, the value of my house, and I get taxed every year for what my house is successful. So you can now and darkly whatever, you say, well, there's another house on the other side of the hill, the same house and, uh, same money, which, and you wanna sell it, which one's the guy gonna buy it, the one beside the junkyard or the one in a nice neighborhood? So they're gonna say, well, you can buy that one, so you can always lower the price of your house, exactly my argument.
We're off topic right now.
So that's, you know, when, when I, this has happened every, this happened three times, so you people just come and go on the last time, but F what, this three times and had my property taxes lowered because of the junk house beside my house. So it hits you, it hits you in the pocketbook. It's gonna happen in other places too, because it says right on the thing, well, you find another property, the same value and see what, you know, and every time I fight it, I win because of, my, the value of my house goes down, house is gonna keep it nice, the next yard is a junkyard.
Right, I, I hear what you're saying, I hear you, but you are off topic and we need to stick to the topic.
With the rental unit, it's gonna be the same thing.
Do we have any other questions or comments from anyone else?
Can I just make a couple points? I'm with the original, many questions. So the question came up about what state rules apply, I couldn't give you citations, but the fire and safety folks, you know, short-term rentals need to meet those requirements. The Department of Health has rules, they apply to short-term rentals and they also have to pay taxes, meals and rooms taxes. As far as I know, those are the state rules they need to follow. The proposal tonight is a pretty simple thing, you know, it's adding short-term rentals to the conditional use list, but I wanted to just articulate what the, I believe the zoning board looks at with a conditional use review. I think this gets to some of the questions here tonight. So they look at the capacity of existing plan, existing and planned community facilities. They would look at the character of the area affected, they'd look at traffic on the roads and in the vicinity, other bylaws in effect, if there are any utilization of renewable energy resources, which may not apply in that case. They're looking at parking, uh, state and town health ordinances must be complied with, it's talking about, um, no level of operation is permitted, um, in conditional use that creates excessive, injurious, noxious, flammable or explosive hazards. That's about it. So I think there's a number of standards that the zoning board is looking at, if that helps people understand what this really means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The reason we're putting this forward is to get something, you know.
You gotta get, you gotta have some kind of control over it. But some, you're gonna, at that town meeting, some, they're gonna ask you questions and you're gonna have to give them some kind of orders of what you're gonna be looking at, because they're gonna ask you, well, when can we do this, can we do that? They, they wanna, they wanna control it too. They don't wanna control it, they wanna have some idea of who's gonna be living in that house beside them on a weekend.
I don't think there's any way...
You have, you have, I understand you have to do this to get to give the people who won't be to do this, they're gonna ask you questions, you're gonna have to give them some kind of a order.
I think this gentleman here was just nice enough to do that.
Right. He did, thank you.
I mean, he just explained to you what the general look of that would be. And, and what we were here tonight to say really, and I'm, I'm speaking for all of us, but it's just the idea that we're saying, would the people of Andover like this to be nestled under the conditional use so that then we have all of these tools that he just talked about at our disposal to begin to see what this is gonna look like for us in a real way? Because it's been about two years.
Right.
Right? That, that people have wanted specific things, which we've looked into and realized, that's a very slippery slope, so we need to do this really well and we need to do it very legally because Andover is not a, it's not Chester, we don't have that kind of income, we're not Ludlow, so we can't just broadly say, well, we've got 20 short-term rentals and we are not gonna allow any more, because you know someone will sue us over that, someone will sue us. And if that happens, we're done. So we're trying to be incredibly responsible about this.
No problem, that's exactly right, but at a town meeting, people are gonna ask you questions.
And that's what we're gonna say to them, we just answered you.
They've all been, he has addressed, thank you, many of those questions.
You're coming to town meeting, we're gonna make you stand up and say things, you're coming in, you're coming to town meeting and when people are asking for specifics, you can say, I can't give you the specifics, but these are the places that would be covered.
If the fear of getting sued drives what this town does, that means we can never enforce anything.
No, it does not.
No.
No, it does not, no. Listen, this is a brand-new frontier, short-term rentals are something that are happening, as you know, all over Vermont, this is all over.
All over the world.
And many of the extremely gung-ho platforms that happened, the, the towns that went in and said, we're gonna ordinance this right out of our reality, those towns are now having to roll a lot of that back and they're in trouble a little bit and we don't wanna do that, we wanna be responsible and we want this to work for everyone. I mean, I was born and raised here, I've got six generations back, do I love short-term rentals? Do I love that thought as a Vermonter who's, who's, who, my, my people were here before Vermont was even Vermont, right? Jonathan can tell you that. So no, I don't love it all, but I also understand that it has to be fair, you can't just tell people what they can do.
But if we are going to have safety for the renters, we have to upgrade, we would have to upgrade...
We're not responsible for the renters' safety.
We don't, we don't care about the safety of the renters.
We aren't responsible for the safety of the renters.
We're not responsible for that, we're gonna allow, we're gonna allow short-term rentals, the people who come here, we don't care about their safety.
Of course, as a human being, I care about my neighbor's safety, but what I'm saying is...
There's no responsibility.
Andover isn't, no, I don't think we do, maybe I'm wrong, someone can correct me, but I don't believe Andover is responsible.
What if, what if...
Andover's not responsible for my safety and my home.
Well, the renters may not agree, what if they sue us? What if somebody comes up here and has a stroke, they call 911, nobody shows up for two hours and they die? And they're not suing us.
Ask Joe a question about the conditional use, which is something I didn't know, you said that once a conditional use is granted, that's it, it can never be removed. Where is that? Is that in the, the regulations and the zoning regulations?
Well, we have, we have no, when the issue of permit, it does not come with a timeline. The, the conditional use permit attaches to the land.
So Joe...
Goes with the land, if, if the land, the ownership of the land changes, the, uh, the permit goes with the land.
So would that mean then that if someone has a short-term rental and they sell it?
Yeah.
The next owners don't have to apply for a, a conditional use?
That's correct, yes, right, it, it runs with the land. That's the difference between doing a, as I said before, the difference between doing a conditional use permit, which attaches to the land, and doing an ordinance, which is a permit that's issued to the owner itself. When the owner settles the property, it no longer exists. Now, when it is a conditional use permit, it does exist with a new owner.
It seems like you have quite a few things that you consider when you write a conditional use permit, couldn't one of those things that gets considered when you write the permit, that it gets written in there, that it needs to be renewed or looked at or that you do put a deadline on it?
That would, it, I, I, in fact, I asked that question. And my advice was that if you put a limit on a, you could, I suppose, but then that would apply to all conditional uses, uh, use permits, it's all of them.
Retroactively?
Uh, no, not really, but then it would become...
So we could see a way where you could say, until such time as the property gets sold to a new owner?
Yeah.
Like a, a non-transferable clause, is that what we're talking about, like it doesn't transfer?
Right. So that's, I wonder if that's a possibility.
My advice to that, of that was, and I have, as I said, I, I asked that question and the advice I got was that if you wanna do that, you better have your attorney look at it and craft the language that would, uh, would do that. And I'm not, I'm not sure that you wanna do that, that's one of the things I hadn't, I have not discussed with you, because I thought, uh, if we, if we're trying to do that, we would delay the, the, the process quite a bit. You would have, you know, if, if we said to our attorney, we wanna do a, a specific limitation on issuing a conditional use permit for short-term rentals, that would be a departure from what we have published in our zoning regulations. So that would involve some legalities and I'm not sure, you could certainly do that.
Yeah. So it's, it's possible to have it written up so that one person, so in other words, if they sell it and then the new people buy it and they're gonna use it for a short-term rental, we get the new people in and we have their information and they're now in the system. And I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Obviously.
The whole process of putting it or identifying it as a conditional use and requiring that all the existing ones apply for a permit.
Right.
Says very deliberately, we will have all of the information of how many there are.
Right.
Who owns it.
Right.
What are the, what are the conditions in the, in the building, what are the limitations?
Right.
And our zoning regulations, as, as Jason read for you, have very specific, five very specific conditions that are applied to any, any of those applications. And the board, in fact, can add specific requirements.
Right.
Not involving changes in the law, of course.
Right.
But we can apply some specific regulations that, or requirements that have to be met. So.
I just did a quick search here on this exact subject we're talking about, there's 47 towns in Vermont that have the exact same question on the town ballot.
Yeah, should we put this under
Exactly.
Forty-seven other towns.
Does it violate or not?
Yes.
So it's
Forty-seven towns are doing the exact same thing that we're talking about here tonight, which is, put on the ballot to put this under the conditional use. Forty-seven, thank you, sir.
No problem. This is why we're here doing this, we're just figuring it out. But first, we got to get the town to say, yeah, that, we want that as an ordinance, which is really important thing to do.
We have to take a first step.
First step.
It's not necessarily the last step, but it's the first step, because there's no step yet, and nothing is conforming at the moment, there's no definition, there's
The town just, we just want, we're going to put this on the ballot, and yes, we will answer questions as much as we can on that day, but we want people to say to us, yes, we have voted and the majority of Andover wants us to put it together under the conditional use in our zoning. Now, at that point, all of those details can be hammered out and shared before anything happens in concrete, but first, we have to be told, yes, this is what you should do.
Right.
And that's all we're doing here tonight, is just saying, and wanting for you to say what you think about that.
There'll be an article on the, on the bill of the town meeting.
It will, yes.
It's fine.
Yep.
I think there's two ways to look at it, the fact that the regulations go with the land is
No, no, this is
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, Chris is speaking.
So you'll have
Hold on, Chris is speaking.
Chris is speaking, please allow him to speak.
You can look at it two ways, one says it's permanent because it's a conditional use that goes with land, but the other half is, it will forever have those conditions on it, regardless who owns it.
Right.
Yeah.
There's two ways you can look at it.
Yeah. It's one.
So, if you give a conditional use and the town decides that this is what the town wants to put the short-term rentals under the conditional use umbrella, Joe, you say it goes to the property, would that mean that I have 16 acres, can I put a second home off that's also a short-term rental?
Well, then you need, you need another permit.
Why?
Well, if, if you have 16 acres and you have one house on it, you could build another half of another house for just one house in addition to the one you already have, that's part of, part of the zoning laws. But if you want to put more than that, then you need, you need, first of all, subdivide the property and wing that further.
So, so the answer is yes, that if there's only one additional house on my property, that it would also be under the umbrella of the conditional use for the property?
Yeah, yeah, if you build another house
And Joe, if the use changes, somebody lets the conditional use to go, then it doesn't run for two years, then the condition drops, right?
Well, if, the thing, the thing is, if the, if the, the property changes hands and the new owner doesn't do a short-term rentals.
Right.
He still has a permit, he's just not using it. It does not ever disappear. It rides with the land, because it's a, it's a conditional use permit that runs with the land. If you did an ordinance and said, we will issue a permit for short-term rentals to the owner, then it only runs with the owner, as long as the owner owns that, he could do that, but if he, if he disappears, the, the permit disappears, and it's not the case with a conditional use permit.
Have any other questions? To the Heinz pocket?
Well, it's very interesting.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.